I now call the April fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen work session of the Riverton City Council to order at seven P. M. Would Councilmember Canaan lead us in the pledge of allegiance? And if we could remain standing, Councilmember Larson will lead us in prayer.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our eternal heavenly Father, we ask thee to help us this night, that we might receive thy guidance in wisdom, in helping us decide, in helping Riverton, that we might be enlightened. Father, we're thankful for the opportunity to serve. Thankful for the obligations of the citizens that have put upon us. We ask thy help, name thy son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Would the city clerk please conduct the roll call?
Yes, your honor, Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilman Martin Canaan.
Here.
Councilman Jonathan Fabian.
Here.
Councilman Lee Martinez.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilwoman Holly Gibbon.
Here.
Mayor John Lars Baker.
I am present, and I declare that we have a quorum. The chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Your honor, I make motion to approve the agenda as written.
Seconded by Mr. Larson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The first item on the agenda is recognition for police dispatchers. This week is National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. And Congress set aside this week to promote awareness of our nation's nine-one-one operators and the service that they provide to our community. In Riverton, we have eight full-time dispatchers who serve as lifeline for members of the community who are in need of emergency services. Riverton dispatchers send police and fire services directly and coordinate EMS responses with the county's dispatchers. In two thousand and fourteen, the Riverton Police Department dispatchers handled more than twelve thousand calls for service from the police and nearly three hundred calls for the Riverton Fire Department. So when you pick up the telephone and call nine-one-one, it is a dispatcher who takes that call and sends help and provides you with the information that you need and hopefully extracts the information from you that the responders are going to need when they get there. And so they play a vital function in our law enforcement role, and it's a good opportunity for us to recognize the service that they provide our community. The next item on the agenda deals with bare-knuckle boxing or fighting by arrangement, and we've got a report from the chief of police.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinarily, I don't read from my staff report, I try to just summarize that for you, but this issue's been a little bit contentious in the community, and we worked, did a lot of research that I tried to boil down into a relatively concise format, and so I thought I would just read that into the record. But I hope that's not too tedious, but I'll just read that quickly.
Let's go ahead.
At a previous council meeting, there was a discussion regarding bare-knuckle boxing events in the city of Riverton. The discussion centered on whether the city should regulate these kind of events under a new ordinance, since current city law does not regulate these activities. Council asked that the matter be brought back at a work session for further discussion. There's been some research conducted by members of city staff into this issue since the last meeting. The Boxing Reform Act of nineteen ninety-six, later amended by the Muhammad Ali Boxing Reform Act of two thousand, is a federal law that dictates that all professional boxing matches in the United States must be sanctioned. In states without a boxing sanctioning body, there are currently three such states, including Wyoming, the law states that boxing events must be sanctioned by an organization to which the majority of state commissions belong. Apparently, there is one such organization called the Association of Boxing Commissioners. The president of the ABC is currently Tim Lukenhop, who is very helpful in understanding the law. A letter from the ABC is attached to this council packet. It should be noted that while Wyoming does not have a boxing commission, it does have a mixed martial arts commission, and I have more detail on that in a moment. Bare-knuckle boxing would fit under a boxing commission rather than a mixed martial arts commission. One key aspect of the federal law is the recognition that there needs to be a firewall between managers of those fighters and the promoters, as well as a firewall between promoters and sanctioning bodies. All of this is an effort to ensure that there are certain standards of safety and insurance over fights and fighters. Council may recall that this was the very issue that was brought before council on March seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen. An independent sanctioning body has been recognized by the United States Congress as an effective way to ensure that fighters are not being exploited. An additional fact is that all amateur boxing is also regulated by federal law under the Ted Stevens Boxing Act. This law requires that all amateur bouts be sanctioned by an organization titled USA Boxing. As an example, the city of Casper has an amateur boxing club in their city limits, and that club is sanctioned by USA Boxing. Currently, Wyoming law regulates mixed martial arts matches through a sanctioning body called the Mixed Martial Arts Commission. This commission does not provide oversight of boxing, as mixed martial arts must include, by state definition, some combination of punching, kicking, or grappling. At the March seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen council meeting, a citizen who has promoted some bare-knuckle fights argued that bare-knuckle boxing is safer than gloved boxing. The prevailing medical research does not appear to support this position. According to the Velasquez report, there are dangers associated with both gloved and bare-knuckle boxing, and people do, in fact, get seriously injured or even die during gloved events. However, this report also pointed out that their research indicated that a fighter is a hundred and eighty-four times more likely to be killed in a bare-knuckle match than a gloved match. Obviously, the manner in which these fights are conducted could have a large bearing on the relative dangers associated with them. Taken in this light, a formal sanctioning body providing oversight into these events appears to be a wise approach. City staff reached out to the U. S. Attorney's Office for guidance on this matter. Since the Boxing Reform Act is a federal statute, it is the federal authorities who would be responsible for regulating this law. The U. S. Attorney's Office was not able to provide any specific guidance or even a legal opinion as to whether they would choose to enforce this law. Our own city attorney, Mr. Rick Solars, has expressed his opinion that professional boxing events need to be sanctioned according to his interpretation of the law. A letter from Mr. Solars is attached, but Mr. Solars is also here to speak this evening. A citizen named Corey Williams presented council with his own proposed city code language on March seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen. This proposed ordinance, which was titled sport competition, would essentially regulate all sporting events in the city limits so that boxing was not singled out. Mr. Williams, during his presentation, described the dangers of other sports, such as football and rodeo. A copy of Mr. Williams's proposed ordinance is attached to this document in the council packet. As the chief of police for the city of Riverton, I feel I have a responsibility to promote safety for all of our citizens as much as possible. Ensuring that boxing matches, whether gloved or bare-knuckle, have the appropriate oversight by a sanctioning body seems like a wise and reasonable approach to this topic. Since the federal government may or may not provide any enforcement of the federal law, it is my recommendation that city council consider adopting an ordinance that simply makes the federal law a city code. The city of Riverton already has a similar precedent in that most of the state traffic code has been adopted as city ordinance by reference. There are a number of options available to you this evening. After discussion, you could direct us to prepare an ordinance applying that federal law narrowly to the municipal code. Council could direct staff to not address the issue and continue the status quo. This would place the responsibility for enforcing any violations of the federal government or on the federal government, and the city would take no action. Council could consider an ordinance proposed by Mr. Williams titled sport competition. This would put the city in a position of becoming a sports commission. This option may be contrary to federal law as it applies to boxing, since the federal law specifically spells out the requirement for a state or tribal sanctioning body. Council could direct staff to conduct more research and continue the discussion to a future unspecified date, and ultimately, council could direct staff to prepare a draft ordinance outlining other aspects as defined by council.
Thank you.
Mr. Solars, I believe, would like to speak to you, sir.
Mr. Solars. Thank you, your honor. I have reviewed this law that we've talked about. Basically, what it does is it exhibits motion, fighting in professional boxing, unless it is sanctioned by boxing commission state, or if we don't have a boxing, boxing. I think the key elements are one, boxing match and professional. Dissipants have to pay to understand. Both criminal and civil sanctions violating this. Criminal sanction ends at a fine of a thousand dollars. Escalate from there. Additionally, the civil remedy, attorney general, state action, fine, boxing.
Anybody in council with any questions for Mr. Solars or the chief? Stephen, we have this Tim Lukenfeld available to us on telephone, or?
Yes, your honor, Tim Lukenhoff is the president of...
Lukenoff.
Lukenhoff.
Okay.
Yeah, the American Boxing Commission. We're trying to get him online. Called him earlier and had him on the phone, and he hasn't been picking up, so we're going to try it again here.
Hello? Hello?
Thank you.
Hello?
Yes, this is Tim.
I can, I can, I can hear him a little bit, but we can't...
We could put him on speakerphone and not route him through.
Hi, Tim.
I can hear you, yes.
Tim, this is Lars Baker, I'm the mayor of the city of Riverton, and I think you have a pretty good idea of what we're talking about tonight with bare-knuckle boxing. And I guess our concern is, is do you feel that the, that this bare-knuckle boxing stuff that has been going on falls under the purview of the Association of Boxing Commissions?
Okay, I, I'm having a hard time understanding what you've said.
You can't hear me, or you don't understand what I ask?
I can, I can hear you, but it's muffled, so I couldn't understand what you were saying.
My mic is bad.
Yeah, we may have to go up and... What's that question?
Yes, I can hear, I can understand you and hear you, yes. Nope. Okay. Yes, do you want to try to put me on speaker and see if I sound okay to you all? And then you can jump back on me. Okay, all right, sounds good. You know, several years ago, we had a legal opinion from an attorney by the name of Bruce Spiesler. He was the chairman of the ABC Legal Committee. He was assistant attorney general in the state of Maryland, and it was his opinion as counsel to the ABC that bare-knuckle boxing, tough man boxing, is all covered under the Muhammad Ali Act. No, we, the ABC Legal Council and the majority of the members feel that any type of striking sport like this, where the goal is to punch the person in the body above the waist, is boxing. We just feel like that the attempts we've made through the U. S. Attorney are not interest in these type of cases at all. And that, we just feel like that is why we're getting the response that we got from the U. S. Attorney in, in Wyoming several years ago. But I can tell you that almost all the athletic commissions in the United States, with the exception of a few, because there are some, I don't, I don't want to characterize them as renegade, but there are some commissions in the United States that will approve, you know, anything that happens in their state. So if, if a promoter would try to go to the largest majority of the states, for example, California, Nevada, Texas, New York, Florida, bare-knuckle boxing would never be approved in those states. Okay. I think that if you spoke to the chairman of our medical committee, her name is Dr. Cheryl Walton, she's from the state of New Jersey, she would explain to you that without the protection of the padded glove, that there's more of an opportunity to, to damage the hand, plus there's more of an opportunity to create cuts on the opponent. You'll see in boxing and also mixed martial arts, in boxing, when you have a fighter under a hundred and forty-seven pounds that uses a smaller glove, an eight-ounce glove, and MMA that use a four-ounce to an eight-ounce glove, depending how big your hand is, that those types of smaller gloves produce cuts. And when you remove the glove completely, that's when there is a huge concern with, obviously, the cuts to the opponent, plus the damage to the hand of the fighter themselves. Well, the federal law says in order to have professional boxing in a state, the state has to form an athletic commission. So, no, the ABC would not recognize these types of fights. And that's one of the, the arguments that I think Corey may possibly make, is that the ABC has said in some correspondence that bare-knuckle boxing's not boxing. And that goes along with the reporting of medical suspensions, administrative suspensions, and the actual reporting of the results of a bare-knuckle boxing fight. So all the boxing that occurs in the United States, we, as the ABC, don't want our database cluttered with bare-knuckle fights. And when it goes to mixed martial arts, our database there, there's only mixed martial arts. We don't take kickboxing, we don't take Muay Thai. So what we've tried to tell those few promoters who have attempted this is that the ABC doesn't recognize it, because we don't want these type of results in our database. So, and to make a further comment, the majority of the time when bare-knuckle boxing has occurred in the United States, that is basically hand wraps with no type of glove, it's either been on tribal land that has absence of any regulatory body. Several of those happened in the state of Arizona, on tribal land, no, no regulation at all, and of course, in Wyoming, where there's no state athletic commission that regulates boxing. The other bare-knuckle boxing that you're hearing about and seeing on DirecTV, those are a modified sport where there's an actual glove worn. The glove actually, you can see the knuckle, but there's enough padding on the knuckle that the knuckle doesn't come in contact with the skin of the opponent. So, again, it's kind of the position of the ABC that, that we have promoters that try to bend and stretch the rules to, to create a hype, to, to sell a ticket, more or less. And it's no different than in Canada, a few years back, they were trying to promote some boxing, where they were on hockey skates, on ice, trying to fight. Some promoters tried to come to the United States, that was turned down. There's currently a guy out in Virginia right now that is trying to promote mixed martial arts, where it's three or more contestants against one another, fighting inside a cage, and there's obstacles, padded obstacles, that you can hide behind, jump off, that kind of stuff. So it's a gimmick, it's a way to sell tickets, and then that's the way that the ABC looks at it. And the key is that we always look at the health, welfare, and safety of the fighter, and I can tell you that most legitimate commissions wouldn't approve this type of fight in their state. No, the only groups that may consider sanction it would be what are called amateur martial arts sanctioning bodies, such as ISCF, KIC, various offshoot groups, that their, their role is to sanction really amateur martial arts, such as kickboxing and Muay Thai and mixed martial arts across the country. Those would be the only groups. The only reason those groups have sprouted up is there's no federal law that gives that authority to one singular group to regulate any type of martial arts, amateur martial arts. So USA Boxing is, is given that authority under the Ted Stevens Act, so any amateur boxing that occurs in the United States has to be sanctioned by USA Boxing. No one else, no other group can sanction any type of amateur boxing. And that's what Corey's, or Mr. Williams' statement is, that, you know, USA Boxing, that, that no one sanctions it. Well, USA Boxing won't sanction it. I would guarantee you, if you'd call Colorado Springs and Mike Martino, their executive director, absolutely no way they'd allow amateur bare-knuckle boxing. Um, yes, basically, it is, it's the payment factor, that you have to fight for something. Most, most state and tribal commissions say something of pecuniary value. It usually doesn't place a dollar amount on it. I know in my state, Missouri, that if you fight for money, valuable consideration, then you are a professional. If you don't, you're an amateur. And so anytime we have a group that comes through and says, "We're strictly amateur, we want to do certain type of boxing," well, for example, on college campuses, used to be really popular, where the fraternities would fight one another, they have to be sanctioned by USA Boxing, or they can't have their event. That's just all there is to it. So, so that, that is a distinction, the ability to, to make money when you fight. It varies across the country. The trend across the country is that mixed martial arts, where they fight in a cage and they use boxing, kicking techniques, and grappling techniques. The trend across the country for that is for the states to regulate. There's only a handful of states, maybe five or six right now, that allow those amateur sanctioning groups that I was talking about earlier, to come in and sanction those events within, within a state. But, and if you look on the ABC website, there is a, a map on there that shows how mixed martial arts, amateur mixed martial arts is regulated across the country, to kind of get an idea of how many states actually have brought it into their athletic commissions and made it a, a, a situation where they have to get a license, just like a pro fighter. And then the state sends out inspectors to the event and regulates the event. The original law was put into effect because back prior to nineteen ninety-six, there were several fighters, I should say handful of fighters, that were driving around the Midwest, that had fake IDs, using fake names, and they were fighting under various names. If you look up a fighter by the name of Buck Smith, or a fighter by the name of Verdell Smith, those are guys from Oklahoma that had used three different names, depending on what state they fought. So bottom line is, they would fight, let's say, for example, in Missouri on a Monday night. They might go to Indiana on a Wednesday night and fight. They might be getting knocked out in these events, and there was no recording of any type of medical suspensions on these guys, and there was no requirement that a promoter held insurance for the fighter, or there was no requirement that an ambulance was on-site. So a lot of it was safety aspect when the first law was passed. So now each boxer has to get a federal identification, picture identification, from their home state boxing commission. It's a unique number, they have to show that num, that identification whenever they, whenever they fight in various states. All medical suspensions and results of fights have to be reported within forty-eight hours to the, the certified database that is called Fight Facts. So safety was the biggest aspect, and then when it was amended to nineteen ninety-eight, they went a little bit further into disclosures of, of what promoters were making off of certain fighters, and, and just more or less disclosures about the, the financial aspect of the sport. I appreciate it very much. If there's anything else I can, I can do for you, please let me know. I, I did have an opportunity to speak with Corey Williams today, and, and it's kind of like I told him that, just, I guess in closing for me, is that any combative sport where the goal is to render your opponent unable to continue, has to be regulated. Now, if you decide that this is something you want to allow, just make sure it's regulated, make sure that, that, you know, there's some assurances there for the participants, that there's insurance, that there's an ambulance on-site, there's a doctor, make sure that the fighters are given a physical, and they're physically fit, and, and make those promoters jump through hoops, because they make money off these fighters. And as you probably well know, there are probably people lining up that want to do this, to prove how tough they are. So bottom line is fighters... So, bottom line is fighters will fight for a little of nothing, given any opportunity, and it's our job to ensure that, that it's done safely. Um, but if you have more questions after your meeting, um, certainly, uh, let me know. And, uh, Stephen, if you need anything from me, I'll be in the office all week this week, okay? Okay, thanks guys. Best of luck to you, okay?
Buck Smith is in the internet. And he wasn't a pro when he started. Just a rank amateur.
Rank amateur, huh?
I mean, no, no skill level, never fought before.
I see.
But he made 50 bucks.
So, is there, um, Mr. Sellers?
He had a couple of questions. Addressed in the act itself, one was what constitutes a professional boxing match? That act defines a professional boxing match, boxing contest held in the United States between individuals for financial compensation. And then Councilman Fabian had asked the purpose of this act. In the legislative history, it says that the purpose is to protect the rights and welfare of professional boxer by preventing certain exploitive, oppressive, unethical business practices. Sis state boxing commissions in their efforts to provide more effective public oversight of this sport and to promote honorable competi- competition in professional boxing, hence the overall integrity. Those are the two. History and, and out of the definite.
Thank you. C- council, anybody have any additional comments, concerns, things they'd like to, uh, bring up? Do we have any kind of a guidance for staff?
Your Honor, I think we ought to look into, have staff look into, uh, with the chief into some kind of ordinance to take care of this problem that we have.
Okay, so, ordinance, are, are we interested in regulating this at the city level? Mr. Bailey?
Your Honor, I would, I would say, I don't think the city wants to get into, in any way, having any kind of boxing commission. And from what I have heard and read of the documents we've been presented, um, I don't think that these matches were sanctioned. If the American Boxing Commission is the only sanctioning body that could have sanctioned other than the state of Wyoming, which doesn't have a boxing commission, um, I would support us having an ordinance that would say, you know, any event that just takes place in the city would have to be under a sanctioning organization, which just re- redefines what the federal statute says. But it would give the city the ability to act when one of these events is taking place and is not sanctioned properly. I don't think we in any way want to get into the sanctioning portion of it though.
Your Honor?
Mr. Fabian?
I would agree that, uh, I mean, in my mind, it's clear that federal law is being violated. I don't understand why the, um, is it the US Attorney's Office, I guess, isn't willing to prosecute this other than the fact that they probably feel like it's small potatoes in the, in the world of what they are dealing with. But, at the end of the day, we have a federal law that's purpose in life is to protect the safety of the fighters and to protect the financial interest of the fighters. And I just don't see where that's anything but altruistic. I don't see the negative. And, you know, these sanctioning bodies are put in place because promoters stand to make money from these events, and boxers stand to be injured and or killed by participating in these events. And having some sort of a buffer there saying, "You, the guy who stands to make a bunch of money, don't get to be the one deciding who comes and boxes," or, you know, what, who's fit to box that night, you know? If I spend a bunch of money promoting a match and one of the fighters is in a car accident and shouldn't be in the ring, I don't have a lot of motivation to hold them out if I'm also the one standing to make some money. And so, it really does come down to this idea of having oversight. You know, when there's money to be made, people do a lot of crooked and distasteful things, and I think this system helps prevent that. So, I would support, you know, adopting the federal law into our own code and, and giving ourselves the ability to enforce it since apparently the federal government is either unwilling or I, my guess is unable to, uh, do so at this time.
Your Honor, in, in looking at that ordinance, and I agree with Mr. Fa- Fabian, that if we make it tough enough for a promoter, that he will want to, to have a fight in Riverton, Wyoming. Make it so restrictive that he couldn't really have a fight in Riverton, because he wouldn't make any money.
Well, I don't know about Lars.
Go ahead, Mr. Larson.
I don't know if we want to go out there and say, "Ah, we don't want to restrict people from enterprise." Certainly, we want them to follow the rules. If you're going to bring through wrestling, if you're going to bring through something, then you better be approved by a board, a sanctioning board somewhere. And you better have all the licensing and everything upfront. And you, and whether the United States government, um, is going to sanction it or not, we're the responsible people at this level. But to make it so important, so difficult that nobody can have enterprise, I mean, I'm going to make it difficult for Bailey's to sell gas. That's just not American. You know, but what we want to do is we want to do just exactly what the law means. We want to save people from being injured, we want physicians there, and we don't want promoters taking advantage of individuals or personal gain. And that's not making somebody more difficult, that's just following the law.
I would have to agree with Mr. Larson, and, and I in no way, in what I'm saying, would want to restrict anybody in normal commerce, but I think all of us have to play by the same set of rules. That's what we're talking about. And, and so I think if people want to have bare knuckle boxing, or regular boxing, or any other kind of event, they need to take the appropriate steps, which is go to the state of Wyoming, get them to create a boxing commission, have them set it, come up with a set of rules that governs that state like the law says they need to. And then I think we'd be all for it. That's what they want to do. And I think we just don't want to be in the middle of sanctioning something that is not being followed to the rules, because then I think we take on a little bit of the liability what happens after that, so.
Your Honor, I'm not against free enterprise and making money, but I don't want anybody getting killed just so somebody else can make money. That's just my personal feelings.
Oh, no, no, I didn't mean it that way.
But that's, you know, and that's why I, I'm saying what I said. I just don't want anybody hurt and damaged so bad that they, just so somebody else can make money. Thank you.
Do you have a comment that's given?
Yes. Okay, so, I just have a few, actually. First, I think that the whole thing has been misconstrued and twisted. I think that even on the release form, it states, and I quote, "I am aware," and they're actually signing this, it says, "I am aware and understand that in general, full contract fighting is dangerous and a hazardous activity." Which, when Corey was here, he stated that it wasn't as bad, and it's, rodeo is worse. Um, it says, "And in particular, the techniques and methods of this convention, all in which, as a competitor in this competition, uh, I am by, I shall be participating, I shall be participating, is an extremely dangerous and hazardous event." And that they're doing it on their own will. It also states, which, that just doesn't vibe with me, it also says that they don't actually go and get a physi- a doctor to check them out. They're not, it's not mandatory, it's just advised. So, you're not actually knowing if they're in a car wreck right before they go in that ring. You have no way of regulating it. I think we should move to make a motion to have the staff make an ordinance that mirrors the federal law, 100%. I don't think it's right, I think we're sending the wrong message. I think you're, at 18 years old, you're not a, able to make adult decisions that are going to affect you for later on in your life. I just don't. And I think that you're just encouraging really bad behavior at 100%.
Mr. Larson?
One, one, one question, one. When people say that, that it's not as tough as rodeoing, those, most of those rodeoers, it's not their first go around. They've been mutton busting since they were six or seven years old, and they've been working on a ranch, and they've taken classes in it. And so, to say it's not as tough as rodeoing, rodeoing is tough, but let me tell you, there are very few rank amateurs that just get on a bull and go out there and ride, because they won't allow that.
Do you, uh, do you have direction?
I do. I mean, I think I've heard from...
Mr. Canetti hasn't said a word.
Well, I'm going to ask a, ask a question. To adopt the federal law, do we need to also add a little bit in there to cover amateur events, seeing as how the federal law only covers professional?
Uh, my concern, my concern is, is that, is that we should not, whatever our regulations are, we should not be interfering with, uh, you know, uh, high school wrestling, uh, uh, USA boxing, uh, o- other kinds of amateur contact sports in any way, um, training in any of the martial arts. I, I don't know how, my problem is, I don't know how you make those words on a piece of paper so that that's clear, okay? And that's, I guess that's my struggle at the, at this particular moment, but at the same time, I think we should have some kind of language that says something that any, any, any kind of combat sports are going to have to be sanctioned by a state sanctioning organization.
Your Honor? The, the only other thing I would say is, you know, if, if in fact this is an event that's so important to the people involved in it and organizing it, that, uh, they would like to see it continue, I would highly encourage them to go and get it sanctioned. Go get it sanctioned, but don't get it sanctioned by somebody in Europe. Get it sanctioned by a state of Wyoming boxing commission. I mean, if you can make a legitimate, truthful argument to the safety and utility of this type of sport, I have no doubt that there are reasonable minds that will allow that, just like MMA is allowed now, and it wasn't. You know, there was, I'm, I'm a chiropractor. There was a day when chiropractors were put in jail for practicing medicine without a license in the state of Wyoming. And now, we're duly licensed through the state. And I'm sure Mr. Bailey would tell you that in his line of work, there are both state and federal regulations that must be followed if he's going to operate as a gas station. And, you know, there are few, if any, businesses that just get to run roughshod and do whatever it is that they want. That, e- everybody's got some regulation, and that regulation is in place to protect and ensure that, you know, I as a chiropractor have to be educated to do my job. I have to get continuing education to do my job because they are protecting the welfare of the people who come to see me. And this is no different. So, this isn't a death sentence, this isn't, I have, I really have no problem with the event, but I want it done right. And I want, I don't want Mr. Williams, who I'm sure is a very good man, but he stands to make the money, he can't make the call. I'm sorry, that's not how it works, it's not a fair, it's not fair to the fighter. So, that is my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on the council? You have, you've got enough direction to do what you need to do?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay. All right, the next item of business is, uh, the presentation from the Wyoming Liquor Division. Gentlemen.
Mr. Mayor, council, thank you for, uh, giving us a little bit of time. My name is Tom Montoya, I'm chief of enforcement for the Department of Revenue Liquor Division. Uh, this gentleman is, is Kelly Hunt, he's my, uh, senior agent. Uh, Kelly is the one that you'll actually see out in the field, uh, he directs the inspections statewide, um, and we're going to go over that in that presentation. Now, Kelly's been in conversation with Mr. Weaver, uh, for the last couple of weeks, uh, um, trying to put a presentation together, so, um, Kelly came to my office and said that he would, uh, like to be able to do this, and, and, uh, we sat down and discussed some, some things that we'd like to tell you, but, um, we'd also like to let you know that we'd like to run a very informal, uh, presentation here, so, uh, you know, if you've got a question mid-presentation, please ask the question. We, uh, we won't be offended by that in any, anyway, uh, we actually encourage any questions, you may go. I, I don't want you to lose a train of thought or, or, or something like that. Um, but we're going to give you some basics. Uh, the agenda for today is we're going to go over some liquor license types, um, licensing enforcement partnerships. In other words, how does the liquor division work with the local licensing authorities, which in this case is, is you folks? Um, and of course, uh, one area that has had an enormous amount of confusion statewide, and we spend an enormous amount of time with, uh, is dispensing rooms. And, and, uh, so Kelly's actually got some, uh, great, uh, photos in here, uh, as far as, uh, dispensing rooms and, and some of the descriptions and, and how we determine them based on statute. Um, just to give you just a, a little bit of background before we get into the, uh, into the presentation, though, I just wanted to let you know, for those of you that aren't real familiar, uh, because we're talking so much about regulation tonight, um, how does Wyoming work in, as far as alcohol regulation? Uh, Wyoming is an alcohol control state. Uh, we're one of 17 states, there used to be 18, the state of Washington in, in 2012, uh, the voters, uh, decided to, uh, become a, a private state. Uh, in other words, the state would no longer be the wholesaler of alcohol. Uh, in fact, in Washington's case, they, they actually even had retail stores. Um, and so, uh, there was an enormous amount of money that, uh, really that they generated for the state of Washington because of the retail side. Um, they were generating about $350 million a year to the, for their general fund. Um, big corporations saw that, and, uh, they, uh, they bought an election and, uh, they went private. Um, so, so that the state of Washington wouldn't have a, a huge hit to their revenue, uh, they have extremely high taxes, and, uh, so far it hasn't worked out very well for them. Um, in Wyoming, um, the legislature in 1935, uh, Wyoming was the fourth state to ratify the 21st Amendment. Um, and so, uh, basically, the legislature back in then decided that, uh, they would control the wholesale of alcohol, but all retail is done on the private side, uh, in Wyoming. And that has been a very good formula for us. Uh, we don't generate the kind of revenue that, that the Washingtons or the Pennsylvanias did, but we're a lot smaller state, and, and it's a great working partnership between private industry and, and the wholesale side of, of alcohol. So, all spirits, all wines must come through the Wyoming Liquor Division. Uh, you may have known it as the Wyoming Liquor Commission, uh, there was a commission for a number of years. Um, in fact, uh, I'm one of the, uh, commission employees, there's very few of us left anymore. Uh, but, uh, in 1996, there was a reorganization by the legislature, and they rolled the commission into a separate division of the Department of Revenue. Uh, but the function is exactly the same. Um, we control the wholesale, uh, spirits and, and wine sales in the state of Wyoming, on, only on the wholesale side. Uh, we do not do anything with beer, but we do regulate it. Uh, we license all the malt beverage wholesalers, um, and, uh, Kelly and Jason will, will inspect their establishments just like, uh, like we do the, the retail establishments. And, and basically, that's the, uh, the Cliff Notes version of, of how Wyoming works as an alcohol control state. Uh, and with that, we'll go ahead and get into the, uh, the presentation and, and work with the, uh, uh, different types of licenses.
Most of the liquor licenses are based on a population formula. Um, basically what that means is the city population is going to determine how many liquor licenses are available in that particular community. Uh, the liquor division receives these population figures every 10 years, um, comes down through the Census Bureau to our state agency, which is Information and Administration, A&amp;I, and then they will distribute those numbers throughout, uh, the state agency. Um, every state agency or most state agencies use these figures for one reason or another. Um, what we do with them is we recalculate the number of liquor licenses that are available, and then what we'll... and then what we'll do, um, is send those out to all the, the licensing authorities within the state. As a matter of fact, we should be receiving those figures probably in the next couple of months, so we should be sending Riverton an update on what their liquor license is gonna be for the upcoming, um, next five years. There is a potential of actually losing liquor licenses. Um, that doesn't mean that we're gonna go out there and say, "Okay, you, your license comes back to us or to the city." Um, we don't do that. What they have to do is continue to maintain the license, which means that you're over-allocated, okay? So, if somebody goes away for some reason, they do not renew the license, that license is gone. Fall back one. Um, most of the time, though, the populations rise, so you end up actually gaining licenses. So, we should get some new figures here in the next couple of months.
Uh, the first license that we'll talk about is the one that is probably the most popular, the one that everybody knows about, and it's the full retail liquor license. Uh, that's the license that normally carries value. Again, that's issued on a population formula and statute. Uh, they're limited, and this is the one that is, that people really want, that you can have on-premise, uh, which means bar or lounge, or it can be off-premise, which means a package store, you can have a combination. Uh, all of those different functions are allowed in statute. Uh, and these are the ones that are known in some communities that can go for half a million dollars. And basically, that's all blue sky, okay? Um, because really what it is, is just a right to use that license, because the licenses all belong to the licensing authority, which is, in this case, would be the city of Riverton. Uh, those are your licenses. These people just get to pay a fee, uh, to use this license once a year. I think for your full retail, it's probably fifteen hundred dollars in here, um, and that's, that's what they pay, because it's your license, uh, and will always remain your license. Um, but they can transfer ownership rights or usage rights, basically, uh, to another person, and that's really where the value, uh, will come about. Uh, so that's really why you'll see this license carry a lot of value, um, which created some controversy, and as we get into some more of these license types, you'll find out why.
Uh, the next, uh, most popular license type is the restaurant licenses. Um, these are fairly restrictive. Um, they are usually readily available. The, the formula that's used for restaurant licenses, uh, basically makes them a, available all the time, they're unlimited. Um, it's crazy formula, and I think, uh, with the next census, everybody, every community will have unlimited licenses. So, these are fairly, uh, easily to get. Um, you do have to qualify as a full-service restaurant, however, and that's the kicker. Um, you have to have waitstaff, you have to have cooks, um, you have to order from printed menus, okay? Food and victuals that are just fry orders do not qualify. They, the legislature specifically wanted to disallow the Burger Kings and the McDonald's from having liquor licenses in the state. So, they are fairly restrictive, um, does not allow a bar or a lounge, okay? On a restaurant license, you cannot consume in the licensed room. So, what you'll see on a restaurant license is they'll have a little, uh, place in the back, a little room in the back where they'll go, they'll, they'll pop the tops on the beer, pour their draft, mix the drink, whatever they're doing, then they'll deliver it to a table or booth. Cannot have a bar on this type of license. Um, there is a restriction, you have to have a, a sixty percent food versus forty percent alcohol sales, okay? They want to make sure you truly are a restaurant and not a bar on these type of licenses. Um, we did an audit a few years ago, um, based on the next license type that comes up, and we audited most of the restaurants in the state that had licenses, and it was about a, a ninety, ten split, okay? They were nowhere near that forty percent on the liquor sales. Um, one other restriction is it does not allow package sales, okay? So, they cannot leave the premises with the liquor, okay? They have a drink while they're eating their meal, and that's it.
And the one exception to that rule, because there's always an exception, of course, um, there was a bill that was passed in the legislature a few years ago, it was kind of termed the Merlot-to-go bill. Uh, Rosie Burger, uh, out of Sheridan County, uh, got this bill passed, and basically, it wasn't so that restaurants could sell packaged, is that if you went to a restaurant and you ordered a bottle of wine, um, usually there's, you know, on an average, four glasses of, of wine, um, in a bottle, and maybe you just drank two of them, and you wanted to, uh, take that bottle home with you. You could do that. That way, you're not forced to sit there and drink more than you want to. Uh, the requirement is that the retailer must recork the bottle, they must put it in a, a clear plastic bag and tape it or staple it shut with a receipt for that day. And it's really so that it wouldn't promote, uh, aggressive drinking, and, and people could just have that and finish the bottle at home. Um, and so, that was kind of, actually, kind of a fun bill to work with, uh, and they termed it the Merlot-to-go bill. Uh, the next, uh, is, is probably, it, it is the newest type of licensing in the state of Wyoming. Uh, a few years ago, uh, there was an interim, uh, uh, corporations, uh, meeting, uh, being held up in Sheridan, as, as a matter of fact, and Chairman Illaway pulled me aside and said, "I really want you to, uh, look at a new type of a license." We've got some large chain restaurants that wanna come into Laramie County, and they wanna come into Naterona County, um, and have since spread to numerous other counties. I, I know of Sweetwater and Campbell County that they've gone into, you know? And, uh, he said, "The one complaint that they're having is that they didn't wanna pay the two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars for the full retail license," uh, because their food operations, but, you know, their, their operating MO is that they will have a small lounge with their food operations. And so, uh, we drafted a bill, um, 'cause his one requirement to me was, "This license cannot carry value." Um, and so, we, uh, we termed it a bar and grill license, and basically, we modeled it after a restaurant license. It is still a restrictive license, you have to qualify as a restaurant, uh, as Kelly said earlier. Uh, you have to have a full-service kitchen, you have to have waiters, you have to have staff, printed menu, all of that, to qualify for this. Uh, you still have the sixty, forty split, uh, no package sales, you have to cease the sale of alcohol when you close the, uh, when you close the kitchen, uh, so you can't continue to operate the bar. But what this does is that it allows you to have a lounge. In other words, you can have consumption in the dispensing room, and that's where it differs from a restaurant license, where the consumption is prohibited in the dispensing room. Here, you can actually have a lounge. Um, and that was to accommodate these, uh, large chains, but, you know, there's been just as many Wyoming restaurants that have opened up on these, and it's worked really well for them. Um, and so, uh, uh, and the beauty is, is these licenses can't carry a value. They will always come back to the licensing authority, um, you can't transfer ownership on them, um, they will come back, and if somebody wants to buy your business, then you'd have to go and reapply as a, as a brand-new one. Again, issued on a population formula and statute.
And the next one, uh, is the resort licenses. Um, we don't have a whole lot of these, um, throughout the state, most of these, um, we have one or two usually in some of the bigger towns. Uh, of course, quite a few up in the, the Teton County, the touristy areas, we have quite a few of these, mostly because you have to have a pretty high, um, standard to qualify for these types of licenses, okay? You have to have a restaurant, you have to have a convention facility, you have to have a valuation of a million dollars in the building, um, you have to have a motel and ho, or hotel, um, that has at least a hundred rooms, or you could have a ski resort, which was just added last year or year before in the legislature.
And it has to be valued at ten million.
Correct. So, there's very high standards to get this particular license. Um, so, these are actually readily available, they're, they're not on the population formula, um, but you do have to qualify for them, so there's, there's not a whole lot of them throughout the state. Um, some of the advantages that this license has is they can dispense, you can run a cart anywhere on your property and sell, so you could put a little beer cart and run it around if you wanted to, which a lot of other licenses can't do that with. Uh, one of the restrictions, however, is no package sales. Again, everything has to be consumed on the premises.
Yeah, and there was a change in the twenty fifteen legislature on that particular license as well. Uh, as a matter of fact, Kelly and Jason had been in Teton County, we found a number of those, uh, operations out of compliance. Um, and basically, the business model of resorts have changed over the years, and basically, hoteliers are hoteliers, and F&amp;B people, which is the food and beverage side of it, are food and beverage folks, and the two somehow aren't mixing anymore. Um, and what they were finding is, they would go into these large resorts, and they would have maybe a chain restaurant or a really nice fancy restaurant, uh, owned by somebody else, and so they were utilizing the resort license, which is a violation of law. Um, but a, a couple of years ago, uh, Bill Lubin, City Attorney out of Casper, um, actually had a, a bill introduced by WAM, uh, into the legislature for golf courses. Um, and that golf course, uh, because cities and counties are great at owning golf courses, they're really good at maintaining golf courses, they were not real good at the F&amp;B side of it. Um, and so, they were leasing them all the time, or they would also, uh, have to take that golf course license in the golf pro that was there maybe one or two years, and they were constantly transferring these licenses. Um, so, they drafted a bill, the legislature accepted it, and now, a political subdivision, a county or a city, can actually hold a, a license on a golf course, um, a limited license, and they can lease to the F&amp;B operation to a third party, but they would maintain ownership of that license, so they're not transferring the license every year. Same thing happened with, we just stole that language, you know, this year, um, and put it into resorts, uh, to, uh, bring them into compliance, um, and so, that's going to help a lot of them. Kelly's headed up there in another, uh, four or five weeks, um, and, uh, to get those folks straightened out, uh, with the new law that's gonna be coming onboard in July. But they'll be able to lease their F&amp;B operations, uh, but they will still maintain responsibility of that license, uh, they will still maintain the sales tax license to make sure proper taxes are collected.
And the next one is the one we probably have the biggest headaches on, most calls on. Um, as a matter of fact, we were here just this afternoon, meeting with your clubs, talking about this. Um, club licenses. Limited retail, and we pounded that home today. Limited, okay? It is not a full retail license. What this is, is there are several ways to qualify. You can be a fraternal organization, be a veterans' organization, golf club, social club, political subdivision, there's lots of different ways to qualify, and we won't go over those today, because the list is fairly long on how you qualify. But the point is, you have to qualify somehow, okay? We get a lot of calls that say, "Well, we're the, the Elks Club, and we got this special license." Well, you're an Elks Club, yes, you have a private club license, yes, but you've got the same license as the golf course, you got the same license as Eagles Club, okay? It's not a special license, okay? It's a limited retail. And basically, uh, these are very inexpensive, as you might know, comparatively speaking to other licenses. They are readily available, again, you've got to qualify for them. Um, in the case of a veterans' organization, you have to have a, a charter from Congress, okay? And we look for that charter when we do our inspections. Um, another one that's, uh, big is fraternal organizations. Okay, you gotta be active in thirty-six states and have been around for at least twenty years, okay? So, you have very stringent qualifications to obtain these licenses. Um, some of the restrictions are no package sales, okay? Once the, the alcohol is on the premises, it cannot leave, okay? That's another thing that we spoke about quite a bit this afternoon, is it cannot leave. Okay, you can have functions, we can figure out how to do those type of fundraisers that you wanna do at the lake or in the park, whatever, it's gonna require some other hoops to jump through, but the liquor does not ever leave. And the main point with these is sales have to be to members and accompanied guests only. And that's where we get a lot of questions. What is an accompanied guest? Well, Wyoming statute does not define that, so you kinda gotta use common sense with that, um, and, and use some of the bylaws that are already in place for some of these clubs to determine that factor. Um, we've had a lot of questions over the last couple of, uh, months, actually, from different municipalities throughout the state, 'cause we're seeing a lot of clubs really hurting, they're, they're having a tough time. Uh, they don't have a whole lot of membership, and they're kinda bending the rules. So, we have spent a lot of time reeducating the communities and these license holders on what they can and cannot do.
Yeah, and oftentimes, it's not the Liquor Division, it's not state law, it's not municipal ordinance that is so restrictive on these clubs, but it's actually the club charters. Uh, for instance, uh, the VFWs, uh, great example, we see a lot of them really struggling right now because they're losing membership, and they have a very aging, uh, membership, uh, as they go through. Um, it's hard for them to get new members on, and, and, uh, one of the reasons is being is because their charters, the national charter says that to be a member of a VFW, you have to meet certain dates, uh, that you were in the armed service. And not only do you have to meet those dates, you actually had to serve on foreign soil. Um, you know, uh, American Legions, same thing, but you had to have, uh, certain dates, but you didn't have to serve on foreign soil. Um, so like, uh, the American Legion in the city of Cheyenne is doing pretty well. Uh, they've got a pretty big membership, we have F.E. Warren Air Force Base in the city of Cheyenne, and during the Iraqi war, um, a lot of those guys were now qualified, because they were in service, uh, in Cheyenne, uh, very important roles in what they do, a lot of missile maintenance and, and whatever else that they do, uh, but they weren't serving in Iraq, okay? Um, so they don't qualify for the VFW. Um, but they qualified, and it really boosted the membership of an American Legion, uh, but VFWs are hurting there. Um, so i- it's not us being restrictive, it's actually the, uh, charters that's hurting them. Um, you know, we also have some social clubs, um, and, you know, one of the things, there's one in, in Sheridan, and there's one in, in, uh, Teton County, and two coming onboard in Cheyenne, as a matter of fact, at theaters. Um, and these are members of a theater club, uh, but what they can do is, they can have, in their bylaws, one-day members. Um, they have to have the basis, you have to have the, qualify for that license, but then they can have one-day membership, so if you buy a ticket, you get a one-day member, you can have a glass of wine, which is what they use their license during intermission, um, and they're perfectly legal there. Now, the VFWs and the Legions can't do that, because their charters don't allow for those one-day memberships.
Your Honor? Go ahead.
I have a question, Mr. Montoya. If a club, say, like the Elks Club, has a sponsored event for a benefit, and they get a group of people in there that are not members, how would we treat that?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, Councilman Martinez, that's a great question. Um, as a matter of fact, I'm gonna hold off on answering that for just a minute, because Kelly actually made a slide on that particular question, uh, and we're gonna address that here in just a second.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have a, a few examples to go through, um, because we do get a lot of those questions, um, so we'll try to answer that. If we don't, please bring that back up, we'll, we'll try to be more specific. Um, I wanted to expand just a little bit on the members and accompanied guests, uh, provision, um, that's actually under twelve-four-three-oh-one. And this is another thing that we talked about extensively this afternoon. Um, "A club holding a limited retail license shall not sell alcoholic or malt beverages for consumption anywhere except within the licensed premises," for one, okay? It's gotta be inside the building, can't be in the parking lot, can't be in the park, inside the building, okay? That's the first thing. The second one is highlighted, bolded, because this is the one everybody needs to pay attention to, "For consumption by its members and accompanied guests only." Now, when the legislature first, first put this in, in statutes, clear back in nineteen thirty-five, they didn't put what accompanied meant. I guess they assumed everybody had the same definition. And now, seventy-five years, seventy-six years later, we're finding out, everybody's got a different interpretation, okay? The next portion of the statute is also very important, "It shall be the duty and obligation," and that's the only time you will find this in state statute, "duty and obligation together of the club to check and regulate sales to members and their company guests." It's their duty. They have to ensure that they are selling to their members and their guests only, okay? When they advertise, "Hey, we're having a big event in here tonight, everybody come in, cash bar," is that accompanied? Probably not. Um, we get a lot of folks that say, "Well, hey, my buddies come in and they sign in." Hey, that's great, that only proves they were there, that doesn't mean they were accompanied by anybody, okay? So, they have to be with that person. The person that's, that's with the member, or the member has to be with that guest through the entirety, okay? We have a lot of clubs that say, "Well, hey, I met my buddy down here, and then he left." Well, he's no longer accompanied, isn't he? Okay, so we get a, we get a lot of things...
Please, I have another question now, concerning the golf courses. You said, you made the statement that they had to consume the, the alcohol in the building, but a golf course, if they go out on golf carts and sell out on the golf course, how do we handle that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Martinez? Great question, and that was thought of by the legislature. And obviously, at some point in time, and I can't tell you the date because I didn't do the research on it, but golf courses went to the legislature and said, "Hey, you know, the license will allow me to sell in the club, but our members want to take them out on the course, and we would like to be able to run tournaments, and we would like to be able to have a golf cart that sells beer, you know, or sometimes they'll have them, you know, about midway through, they'll have a little beer shack, you know, for a tournament." And the legislature agreed, of course, they had a bunch of golfers in the legislature that year. But that is allowed, under twelve-five-two-oh-one. There's an exception for golf courses that allows them to sell out on the course.
Thank you. Mr. Sellers?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
We are going to be getting into that in just a minute. That's actually like Councilman Martinez's question. We're going to be getting into that. We're going to go through an opinion from the AG, and we're going to get into some of those examples as to why that happened.
But I will try to address that real quick. Basically, what we do is we start asking a lot of questions. How is it being done? Who's going to be there? Who's sponsoring it? Lot of questions. What we're trying to drill down is, are their members going to be there? If they're going to have plenty of members there, then they could be accompanied guests. Yes, they're probably okay. Some of these big bands that we're seeing right now, we've had some in the central part of the state where there's two or three hundred people there, and there's like two members there. I don't know about you, but I wouldn't consider a hundred people accompanied by me, and I wouldn't want to be responsible for a hundred people. So there is a lot of questions we need to ask and get answered before we can really give them a really good answer. Yes, sir. Absolutely.
This is a problem that's existed probably since limited retail licenses have been around. As a matter of fact, Attorney Gray, Attorney General Gray opined in nineteen forty-seven, it's still a good opinion today. It's used by Attorney General's Office on letters of advice to us. But basically, he's saying the same thing. I'm not going to read it verbatim, but basically what he has said, that limited licenses, limited licenses are not to be competing with full retail licenses. And that, you know, they were designed for specific meaning for club members, whether they be veterans' clubs, or fraternal clubs, or golf clubs, it could be a theater club, it could be just about any kind of a club under a social type of a license if you qualify. And they're not to be abused, and especially with the accompanied guests. You know, you can't compete with a full retail license, you just can't open the doors. One of the things that we see oftentimes, as we've been traveling the state, talking with city councils and clubs, is, you know, they're justifying it by saying, "Well, we have a signing book, you know, and so anybody that signs the book is a guest of the club." Well, that's not accompanied. Basically, as Mr. Sellers had asked a little bit ago, you know, if Chief Broadhead or one of my agents went in undercover and just started asking people, you know, "Who are you with? Are you accompanied by a member? Are you a member?" And if they say no, well, there's a violation of law. This just happened with my daughter in Laramie, as a matter of fact. She was telling me, we're seeing this very popular right now, is these paint parties, you know, where you go in and you buy a piece of canvas, and there's an instructor. And from what I'm understanding, it's a lot of fun. I know my daughter, who is not an artist, but it was a pretty good picture. But they show you how to paint a picture, and they have a lot of fun. And what they've been doing though is advertising that you can go to the bar and get a glass of wine, and they've been selling it. But these are not accompanied members, and so I asked my daughter, "Well, was this at a private club?" And she says it was, and so I said, "Did you get a glass of wine?" She goes, "We did." I said, "They ask you for your membership?" She goes, "They didn't." And so there was a violation of law. She had a friend with her, and so there was actually two violations of law. These are very popular, and that's the problem with holding them in private clubs. We're not trying to discourage private clubs from renting their rooms, but there are ways to make them legal. But they want the alcohol sales as well, because clubs are hurting right now. But, you know, we've got solutions for them to where they could still sell food, they could still make room rental. They just have to do it in a different manner.
Mr. Cannon? Can a club license, can they apply for a, I guess I want to, I don't know if catering permit is like, is the right term, but like the other, you know, like one of the, like a local bar wants to quote, cater a wedding reception down at the city park, you know, they come in and apply for a permit. Is there a way that a club license, let's say that somebody wants to rent the room for a wedding and also have alcohol, is there a way that that club license can apply for that catering permit so that they can provide alcohol to that wedding reception?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Cannon? Yes and no. No, because a limited retail liquor license cannot apply for a catering permit. The only people that can, the only licenses allowed to apply for catering permits are those who hold a full retail license and those who hold a resort liquor license, okay? Yes, because, for instance, in your example, if there was a big reception at a local private club, because they've got a nice big hall, which they're known to have statewide, they can get with a local retailer and say, "Look, we want to have this big function. We're going to rent the hall from this club, but we want to have a big cash bar." And a retailer could apply for, through the city, for a catering permit, and they could go do that function there. You know, we don't look at a whole lot of, it's usually a lot of club members that are going to be at weddings there. But it could be, it could be somebody that is not in any kind of association with the club. But, you know, if there's a few members there, it's probably not an issue. But as Kelly said, you know, now they're getting bold enough to, and there was just a club in Casper that lost their license, the council did not renew it. They went through that process, because it just happened, everything kind of happened at the end of their license term year. But they lost their license for just that. They had, they built a website, and they just couldn't support it on club membership, so they opened it up to their own rules and said, you know, "We're going to reduce these prices." And again, it was their charter, it wasn't us, it wasn't municipal ordinance. It was their charter that was killing them as far as membership. You know, and they just chose not to go to a retailer to have these big events and, because they wanted to have the bar there. You know, another option may be that maybe they want to just sell beer, because any responsible person or organization, so if they have a ladies auxiliary, for instance, or maybe, I know like American Legions have a Suns group, and I used to be a member of the Suns because my dad was a member of the Legion. You know, those groups can go and get a malt beverage permit, and they can sell, because you don't have to be members for that function. But it's, again, just malt beverage products, which would be whatever a malt beverage wholesaler sells, which wine coolers, beers, you know, hard lemonade-type ciders, that type of stuff, so.
Mr. Bailey has a question.
In the example that we were talking about here, we're at a club, they have a facility that can be used for wedding receptions, for example. So then you're saying that if that wedding reception is not made up primarily of members of the club, you would need to go to a retail liquor license, have them cater the event, per se.
Mr. Mayor.
The club itself could not be the one selling the alcohol.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Bailey, that is correct. If there's, if you don't have the members there to have enough members where these group coming, you know, are accompanied guests, then yes, they're going to have to, you know, go to a retailer and have it catered there. And it has been done. I've seen it happen in, throughout the state. You know, they're just not going to make the money on alcohol sales. They're going to make it on food sales, they're going to make it on room rental, whatever it may be. But they're just not going to make it on alcohol sales, and it's probably going to be because their charter won't allow for that to happen.
Mr. Larson.
So what we're really saying is, clubs are not to compete against retail sales.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Larson, in a nutshell, you're absolutely correct.
And whether you're making money, or you're trying to make money, you're not to make money against the retail sales. You're to serve your club members, am I right?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Larson, yeah, you're not to make money by making illegal sales of alcohol.
Yeah. And so that's what was happening with the boxing.
It was.
And we see the room rentals happen quite a bit in the fall during the Christmas season. We see a lot of the clubs rent out their halls, which is perfectly fine. We always tell them, "Make sure you have plenty of members there, okay, so they can serve as the member for all those accompanied guests." We've seen quite a few places in the state where that's not happening. They'll rent out the room, there's a full bar there, and there's not a member in sight. So we don't know if there's kids in there, we don't know if there's overconsumption, over-service. It's kind of a free-for-all. And as a matter of fact, a couple of these ended up in the paper. We had one in the central part of the state, a guy actually backed over his girlfriend, almost killed her. He went all the way home, was in bed, the police came and drug him out of bed, he didn't even know he did it. Okay, and I told this club, "Hey, this is what starts it, right here." Okay, because once they start looking at all the clubs and see that you're all doing this same thing, you're going to be in trouble. And luckily enough, there was no civil action on that. The guy got fined and put in jail for a while, but the club came out of that unscathed. They have changed their policy because of those things. So we do see the room rentals happen quite a bit, and we try to tell them, "Make sure you're making legal sales." And there is a copy of this Attorney General's opinion in the back of your handout, just for your purposes as well. So want to copy that later and hand that out at a later time. If you have issues in the future, you have that available to you. I want to jump into the liquor licensing process real quickly so that you have a pretty good feel for what the whole process is like. When somebody wants to get a liquor license, they apply to the local jurisdiction, which in your case is going to be the city clerk. More specifically, we deal with Mia, because she handles most of the liquor licenses for us. And so they will talk to her about filling out an application, and then they make a copy and immediately forward that to us. The next thing that they do is they start advertising and setting up a hearing, okay? Now, the reason why they do that is statute requires that they send us a copy immediately. And the reason for that is we have a statutory requirement to review those within a certain time period. Liquor licenses, again, as Tom said earlier, belong to the city, and that's under twelve-four-one-oh-one. Okay, so anytime, well, most liquor licenses, we are actually a licensing authority ourselves for manufacturers, industry reps, that sort of thing. So we issue licenses ourselves, but most of the common ones are none at the local level. Licensing authority powers, this is what you folks do. Incorporated cities, towns, counties within Wyoming shall license and regulate or prohibit the retail sale of alcoholic and malt beverages under this title. So basically, you folks are in control of these licenses. So if you do have somebody who is not adhering to the rules, you have the ability to regulate, okay? If you have, we know there are several jurisdictions that have had issues with a particular licensee. We had one, just for an example, in Cheyenne that was notorious for letting minors in, okay? City council brought them forward during their renewal period and said, "Why are you doing this?" Okay, here's what you're going to do. You're going to add security. You're going to add security cameras. You're going to have armbands. They just hammered them with restrictions, okay? Believe me, the thought of losing that license, and at the time, that was about a $250,000 license because they're no more available, they told them, "If you do not do this, we will not renew you." They had plenty of violations from these folks, so they put a lot of restrictions to get these folks into compliance. Did they do it? Yes, they did. They probably survived about three years after that and then were gone. Bad operators will go away eventually. The licensing authority hearing is what you folks do, okay? You guys consider the license at the hearing. New applicants in transfer applications are handled the same way. There's no right of appeal, okay? So if you deny them, they can always reapply, but there's no way for them to apply or appeal that particular action. Unlike a renewal, okay? If it's a renewal, somebody who already holds a license, they do have a right of appeal through the court system, district court. There are a few of them, like this one in Casper. I believe that one is going to go to district court, so Tom and I will be in court here shortly discussing this issue with them. You have to have a just cause to deny their renewal. They had multiple violations, they had been cited many times. They denied the chief of police who walked into their front doors, okay? They were advertising, "Hey, come on in, if you're a veteran and you write down on a piece of paper, swearing to God you're a veteran, we'll let you drink here." That does not fall in any qualification that we have, okay? And they were holding themselves out to be a veterans' club, a VFW, and they were not. So you've got to have a just cause to deny a renewal application. What we do with the information then is we review the application, and we're statutorily obligated to look at that within ten days. What we're doing is we're certifying that application as complete. We don't ever send anything out, because there's a hundred and twenty-two jurisdictions, about thirteen-hundred licensees in this state. So if we had to send out a notice to everyone, "Yep, you're all good, you're all good," that's all we would do. So what we've done is we send a correction notice if one is required, missing information, wrong information. Generally, we can call the clerk or call whoever's dealing with the applicant, and we can talk to them over the phone, "Hey, here's what we're looking for," or their financial statement doesn't look right. Or our big one is dispensing rooms, and we'll talk about that here in a few minutes.
And to reiterate, you know, our role is not an approval process when we get them at the liquor division. Our role is to review an application to make sure it is correct via the statute. You can really think of us as one of your tools, because what we do along with the clerk's office is to make sure that when that application goes to hearing, and you guys make a decision as a council or board of county commissioners, that you have a true and complete application. That's what our job is, is to make sure all that information is accurate and complete and what is required in statute. So it's really, we're one of your tools, and please think of us that way. The next tool in the bag that we do here at the liquor division, though, is we do inspections. Again, as I stated, Kelly is my senior agent. They don't let me out of the office very often. Come up to one of these, which I enjoy every now and then, and of course legislative hearings, but that's about it. But Kelly directs all the inspections in my office for me. Him and Jason are my two agents, and they've got a big state to cover, you know, nearly a hundred thousand square miles and over thirteen-hundred licenses. So they spend an enormous amount of time on the road. I did that myself for about ten years. But we will inspect every single licensee a minimum of two years. If we have problem children out there, it could be three or four. We do have a few seasonal licenses, like up on the North Fork, you know, North Dakota that are seasonal operations, and they're only open a few months a year. And there are some really boonie locations for some liquor licenses in this state. And we just don't have snowmobiles, or we drive four-wheel drives, but we don't have snowmobiles for some of those locations, so. But we inspect them at least once a year for seasonal locations. And basically, what they're doing is they're going in and verifying all the information. Oftentimes, what will happen is we get a drawing with an application, looks like a room. It says it's a room on paper. They've come and testified to you folks that it's a room, and then Kelly and Jason will get there. It's not a room. And we've got a great example. And we've got a great example of that in a photo that we'll show you, but it's just not a room. What they've done is, they've defined an area, you know, in our arena, the word area, that's a four-letter cuss word, because room is defined in statute, and it has to meet statutory definitions. And the issue is this, is, there's a lot of wiggle room in that definition, and we're pretty open to some interpretations, but it still has to meet the definition of a room. So, that's basically what Kelly and Jason will do when they're out there, they're making sure that the information that they put on their application is true and correct, and they're also there as an advisory capacity. We spend a lot of time working with licensees, if they've made a mistake in a room or something like that, getting it fixed, and they're pretty good at that.
Yeah, a couple of specific things that we're looking for while we do inspections are, one, that the licenses are posted, okay? Liquor license, sales tax license have to be posted where we can see it. Second thing we're looking for is, we're making sure that the ownership matches. Now, why do we do that? Well, that's for your benefit, because those tax dollars that those licensees are collecting are yours, okay? So if we have different names on there, they may not be submitting the sales tax like they should. Could also run into an issue where maybe they are not paying their sales tax, and our sister agency, the excise tax division, will send us a notice saying, you can't sell these guys anymore, because they're in arrears with their payments, and then we gotta stop liquor sales with them. If they have two different licenses, or two different names, they don't match, we may not be able to legally do that. So that's the two main things that we're looking for. Third thing is, to make sure that they have a correct and true dispensing room. We're looking to make sure that it is a room, and that the dimensions are correct. Most of the violations that we run into are very easy ones, hey, your license isn't posted, it fell down, or it expired, very simple stuff, we will deal with them administratively right there, just say, hey, get that fixed for me, send me a copy of it, call me, fax me something so that I know it's fixed. Some serious violations that we may run into, we wanna definitely talk to the license holder about that, but we're also gonna send them a written notification, so that we have a paper trail that there's an issue, and that also goes to the licensing authority, so that you folks are aware of it. And very gross violations, let's say we got a minor in a dispensing room, or something like that, we will immediately report that to the licensing authority, immediately report that to the chief of police, usually, or at least the law enforcement agency, to let them know that that's occurring. One of the big ones that we see right now is gambling devices, actual slot machines. I'm sure you've heard about these horse racing games that have become so popular in the last year or so. Those are exempt, those are okay per statute, but we still run into the Plano slot machines, believe it or not, especially in the clubs, they're usually hidden someplace, and we run into those fairly often. We call law enforcement, because we cannot confiscate those ourselves, a peace officer has to do that, so that's why we contact them, document everything, we take pictures, take down names, take down statements, we do everything investigatively that we need to do, and then we turn it over to the locals.
For the most part, though, we don't find a lot of violations in the state. Licensees are really good business people, but we just don't find an enormous amount of violations, and a lot of them are very minor violations, they correct right away, as Kelly had stated just a minute ago. But we always inform local licensing authority and local law enforcement, whether it's a cease and desist that we're writing, or just a violation letter, they will be in the loop on that particular thing, okay? Now, what can happen with some of these violations? Suspensions. One of the things that the legislature has allowed for the licensing authorities to do is to suspend for sales tax, again, as Kelly had stated earlier, if the licensee becomes more than 60 days in arrears, and usually by the time we get notified, it's gonna be a little bit longer than that, based on how their system is set up, you can usually think, it's probably gonna be closer between 90 and 120 days, that they're gonna be in arrears, okay? So we're gonna suspend sales right away, but you folks have the opportunity to suspend that license. You could call in a licensee and basically have a suspension hearing, saying they need to get their sales tax paid, because basically, that is really money that belongs to the citizen of Riverton, and get that fixed. We know that there's a couple of licensing authorities that have actually put it in municipal code, that once they are notified through us, and we notify immediately, usually within 15 or 20 minutes of receiving a notice from the Department of Revenue, Excise Tax Division, our accounting department does that, that's why it's so fast, it's not Kelly or I. They send those out immediately, and they send it to the licensing authority, they send it to the licensee, notifying them that they are now on sales tax hold, that, you know, we are suspending sales to them, and like I said, there's a couple of licensing authorities, Lermi being one of them, that as soon as they get a notice, they call the licensee and let them know that they're on the next agenda for suspension. They just don't have a real issue in Lermi, because they get it taken care of, they don't wanna get their license suspended, so they get it taken care of right away. So, you do have power of suspension for sales tax license, that is granted in statute. And then, of course, there are other violations under statute 127102, there are revocation procedures, basically, we can't take somebody to, to an administrative hearing or to district court just to suspend, it has to be for revocation. Now, if administrative hearing officer or district court judge determines that the violation does not warrant revocation, then they can do suspension, and that has happened in a case a couple of times, as a matter of fact. I can think of a gambling violation at a private club up north, we were involved in, the local club was having, there was actually a number of clubs, that were having gambling machines in there, these are regular eight-line machines, slot machines, okay? Chief police knew about it, he asked me to come up and visit, we did a walkthrough of all these clubs, found them, and they said, hey, you got them, you got one week to get rid of them. He asked me to come back up in a week, I did, they were all cleared. But one club built a secret room after that, and there was a lady that went to complain to the chief because her husband had lost his entire paycheck in the machine, gave him probable cause, they went in there, and there was a secret room. So that actually went to administrative hearing for revocation of that license, the Office of Administrative Hearings decided that it probably didn't warrant revocation, since it was their first violation, but they suspended them for 90 days, which a club would probably just about put just about any club out of business. So, you know, it's still a pretty stiff sentence, 90 days, no doing business, that hurts. So, you know, those remedies are in there, we don't see them happen a lot, thank God. Like I said, most licensees really wanna do it the right way, and they're good business people, so, and we thank them for that, you know, we enjoy working with our license, as a matter of fact.
Your honor?
Go ahead.
Mr. Montoya, so, let's say we have a club, not even a club, just an establishment that sells to minor three times in three months. What type of actions does the city council have? This says suspension for sales tax, but what about other things like selling to minors? If we have three times, and the council says, well, we wanna do something to them, so they understand that this is not acceptable, what can they do?
By statute, you could, for any violation of Title 12, you could take them to district court for revocation of that license. Again, a judge may determine that it doesn't warrant that, and they may suspend them. I would imagine if it was just a couple of times of selling to a minor, they would probably just get a suspension unless they had a history of that, okay? Now, there are a couple of licensing authorities I can think of, Casper, Lermi, the point system, that have developed a point system, okay? And basically, they've listed a number of violations, whether it be gambling, or falsification of an application, or selling to a minor, whatever it may be, staying open after hours, whatever it may be, they have assigned points, and that if you get enough point, that they would suspend the license. Technically, that suspension isn't granted in statute, but I'd know of no case law, I've never known of it going that far yet, and so it's not been tested. And these point systems have been around for 10 years or so, a number of years. As a matter of fact, I think Casper City Council has been talking about, maybe the point system needs to be readjusted, because in all that time, they've had some problems, but nobody's been able to generate enough points for suspension, even though they've had some problems with a few licensees. They had one in particular, but the feds actually got to him, and he's going off for a nice 18-month vacation in a federal institution, so that particular institution got shut down for a while, so it's no longer this Casper City Council's problem, but again, it just hasn't been tested, but it's there.
Just a quick comment on that as well, I would also suggest that you contact maybe some of the other municipalities. I know Cheyenne, for instance, has done some pretty creative things when they've had some issues with their licensees. Again, they put a lot of restrictions on them. I think if you bring those particular problem children in front of the whole council, and each one of them asks, why are you doing this, why does this continue to occur, that gets to be a very hot seat, and then the council can ask them, what are you going to do to prevent this, and hold them to it? So there's lots of different things that you could do in those particular events to take care of that specific problem children. I wanna go over dispensing rooms real quick, because this is one of the most critical parts of the liquor license application. This is the specific room that is regulated and approved by the city council. Okay, when they apply for a liquor license, you guys, they give us a drawing that shows us where you're dispensing from, okay? That means pouring, mixing, or selling, in the case of a package store. So we know exactly where, when we're standing at the front door, I know exactly where in that building I'm going to look for your dispensing room. It's a place where alcoholic beverages are prepared, distributed, or sold. Per statute, a room is an enclosed and partitioned space within the building. It's underlined and emphasized for a reason. We want a separate facility for distributing alcohol in this state. That's what the legislators put together in 1935, and it has never changed. We're very unique in that way. I go to a lot of national conferences, and there are a lot of big metropolitan areas that have big problems with kids and alcohol, because there is no separation. Wyoming has never had that issue, and I can just kick back and put my feet up and say, we don't have that problem, there's a reason why. Partitions may contain doorways and windows, but any partition shall extend floor to ceiling. That's what the statute says, that's what we have to go by. It doesn't say four solid walls, one window, one doorway, 36 inches across, it's not very specific, so we can be very creative on what a dispensing room is. And I'm gonna show you a really good example here. This is actually a club license up in the northern part of the state, and when we came in to do the inspection, this is what they had described on their license, 17 by nine-foot room. Now, where we're standing is only about, oh, about 30 feet away, but this is a very, very large room, where this club actually had multiple events that had families in it. So, first of all, I don't see any partitions going floor to ceiling, okay? I don't see a room there, does anybody else? We couldn't find one either, okay? So we asked them to, okay, tell me where this room exists. So, when we measured from the top of this bar across, guess what? About 17 feet. And then when we measured from the front of the bar to this back wall, guess what? About nine feet. So they defined a top of a bar, okay, which is furniture, that will not constitute a room, and the area behind it. This happens very frequently. Now, what they actually put on their liquor license application showed a little square, chairs, whole nine yards, looked like a room to us, well, guess what? We show up, no room. This happens quite frequently. We do have some local municipalities that will actually have their city clerk or a designee, sometimes the police department will actually go out and look at these rooms prior to issuance, so that they know that they are in compliance, which helps us out tremendously. In this particular instance, we talked to them about it, said, hey, guys, you're out of compliance, okay? So any functions that you have in here where you're dispensing alcohol, it's the entire room, and this was a very large room, it was about 30 by 60, it was a big room. So when you're having your events in here with families, you had kids in there, you're in violation, and every one of those kids that are in there is a violation, $750. So, the chief could come in there and start writing tickets all day long, that's something we don't wanna see. So what we did is, we sent them an example, hey, guys, here's what we're looking for. And in their particular case, they said, we wanna be able to see through this room, we want it very open. So, we sent them this example, as you can see, here's our partitions going floor to ceiling, okay? There's a barrier, okay? That's the enclosure, we're separating that out. You'll notice, we haven't put any windows or doors in there, statute does not require that, and here's what they designed. They did a very good job with this, they did this in three days, they had some very handy folks who were members, they did it out of little one-inch or two-inch wrought iron, and did it on about 500 bucks, did almost exactly what we asked them to do. So now you have a regulated room, the area inside this enclosure is now the dispensing room. Do we have partitions that go floor to ceiling? Yep. Is it enclosed? Yep. Now they are in compliance. The great thing about this is, it gives them that very open field, they can see through that whole room and see what's going on as a bartender. Now, keep in mind, they can still dispense and deliver out to these tables, it doesn't mean the alcohol has to be contained in there, it just means the liquor has to come from this room. So that's what these folks did, and I asked them if I could use them as an example, because they were great partners to work with. Once we explained to them what we needed, and how they were out of compliance, and that they could have multiple fines, they worked with us and got this done in a weekend. So, this is an example that we use throughout the whole state.
And please don't think that we're down on clubs. The overwhelming majority of clubs in this state, whether it be a veterans' club or fraternal club, they're great partners, and, you know, and they do great things in this state. But we do have a few of them that have just created a lot of problems, not only for us, but for licensing authorities as well, and I think you had one here in this town. Now, the national came in and took care of it, we've seen that happen more times than us taking care of it, or a city council, or board of county commissioners taking care of it. The nationals don't like that, you know, they don't want their name taken in vain, in other words, and so they come in and they deal with it, or it could even be even the state. I know that I had a good friend that was a state commander of an American Legion, and he went to this one town one day, and when he was the state commander, he used to walk in and say, okay, everybody that's a member, raise your hand, because he wanted to buy a drink, as the state commander. He walked into this one, and out of one member, including the bartender, wasn't a member. So there was, you know, he shut that club down, so it wasn't us, it was them. They got the power to yank them charters like that, and of course, without the charter, they don't qualify, and they lose their license.
Mr. Bailey? I guess I have a question, in your example, in the picture you had up in front of us, so the dispensing room was detailed in your license application, that it was excise by excise, and that's where the alcohol could be distributed? But you're saying they can go ahead and take the alcohol, or even serve it to the tables that are outside of that area?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Bailey, absolutely. Statutes say that you can consume anywhere within the building, okay? The dispensing must be in the regulated room, okay? And when it's regulated, it's regulated for dispensing, which can be mixing, pouring, or selling, because it could be a package store, okay? But it's also age restricted, okay? By state law, state law says you gotta be 18 years of age to enter or remain, they went with age of majority. Most municipalities, I can only think of one in this state, have a 21 ordinance, okay, where you gotta be 21 years of age. In the county, 18 years of age, and sometimes that creates an issue, you know, like in the city of Cheyenne, you know, the southern half of the town is county, and there's a couple of really large bars out there, but they can have 18-year-olds in there, but you've still gotta be 21 to consume, you've still gotta be 21 to purchase, you've gotta be 21 to work in the dispensing room. And so, you know, to me, it just makes more problems for the bars, because they have to police it, and that's been their attitude as well. You know, they've got signs up there, you gotta be 21, just like if they were in the city of Cheyenne that has the 21 ordinance. But yes, you can consume- But yes, you can consume anywhere within the building.
Because I guess to me, you're talking about where we don't want the underage people exposed to the alcohol, but then you're letting them go out and consume it, right, sitting next to the kids, so that, I mean, that's almost as bad as having the kids standing there while they're dispensing it. But, and that's the law, I know it's not your choice, but...
Mr. Larson?
But that's the way it is, I go up to the state club, and what they're doing is regulating distribution in that room. That room is the sacred place. The distribution comes out from a waiter, has the drink, has the beer, whatever, delivered to your table, and now you're responsible if you're going to allow your minors at your table to drink. This is a limited club, that's not a retail, that's a limited club, it's a special, that he's talking about on this distribution. And what he's really saying is, is when you draw up that room, that room better be efficient, separate. So, you go up to the bowl, and they have a steak center, and they can't, they don't have an open bar to serve you, have a distribution.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
That's why we bring dispensing room examples in here, because it does get very confusing. This is the way the legislature set it up in the very beginning, in 1935, with the full retail licenses and the limited retail. Those were part of the original act. Restaurant licenses, resort licenses came late '60s, early '70s, bar and grill licenses came in early 2000s. But basically, dispensing room laws, dispensing room law, as far as any kind of a license. The only one that would vary is the restaurant license, okay? And the restaurant license is even more restrictive, because there's no consumption in the licensed dispensing room. All you can do is dispense. In other words, mix a Jack and Coke, pour a beer from a tap, pour a glass of wine into a glass from a bottle, whatever it may be. Basically bartending functions. And they have to be served to tables and booths in a dining area, but remember, a dining area is not a regulated room. So, but consumption can take place anywhere within the building. So, the same dispensing room law holds true for limited retail licenses, resort licenses, full retail licenses, doesn't matter, okay? Whatever they designate, and what you're starting to see, what we're starting to see statewide, is that dispensing rooms are getting smaller and smaller and smaller. You used to see big lounges. Now, there are still the bars that don't want anything to do with kids in there, they don't want them in there, it's strictly just a bar. But, you know, so many of the liquor operations are really supplementing the alcohol with food operations, and they want to have family dining in there. So, what you're seeing is smaller and smaller dispensing rooms. In the case that we showed you up here, that was just a misunderstanding by the club. That was a private club that was never been a problem child, it was a very good club, who'd never had an issue with them, other than we went in there and they misunderstood the law. And so, when we pointed that out to them, they had it fixed within a week. And so, but that little room that you see in there, whatever they built, that is now their lounge, okay? And so, you've got to be 21 years' age, because it's in a municipality, it's in the city of Sheridan, actually, and you can walk in there, but you've got to be 21, that's a restricted room. And so, if you want to have a drink there, you've got to be 21. But you can consume anywhere within the building, so they can have wait service outside. You know, you may have had an application or two, I can't recall all your applications off the top of my head, but maybe a serving area to a patio, or, you know, you can't dispense out there. But, you know, with the city council approval, and as long as it's an enclosed or fenced area, you can have service to a patio. Again, service, you can consume out there, you just can't dispense. I probably muddied the water, but...
And I guess...
Mr. Bailey?
That's where I was going with my question, is in the licensing process, there's really not anything that specifies the serving area, is there, that defined like you do the dispensing room?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Councilman Bailey? No, absolutely not. What you're defining in the application is on question line 1A, and that is the regulated room. The rest of the building, and there could be 50 or 60 rooms in there, they're non-regulated, so those are not defined. And basically, we have no jurisdiction in those rooms. Our jurisdiction is in the regulated room.
Did you have something?
No, I didn't. I was just pointing to Mr. Bailey.
Does anybody else have any questions?
I guess I have one more. Is the fees that we charge as the city, are those set by the state, or is that something we have the ability to flex?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Councilman Bailey? The state will give you a range. For instance, on full retail licenses, that ranges between 300 and 1,500. And I don't remember where your licenses are set at. You're at 1,500, okay? And remember, those licenses came out in 1935 with the original act, and that's why you see the difference in the prices. Restaurant licenses vary between 500 and 3,000, because those came in later, you know, although most municipalities, I believe most counties, will keep the restaurant license, because it's so restricted, probably less than the retail license. But the bar and grill license reflect, you know, later prices, because those start at 1,500, and can be up to 10,500. You know, I think the city of Cheyenne, for initial issuance of a bar and grill license, they asked for the 10.5, but renewal at 1,500. You know, licensing authorities have gotten creative with that. You get to set your prices, but it's got to be within the range that's set in statute.
Thank you, guys, for coming. We have learned a lot tonight. I appreciate the time that you have spent with us, and we've got your number.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for giving us the opportunity to come, and, you know, we've worked with Courtney for a number and number of years. You know, it's glad, I'm really glad to see, you know, a face that I've known for such a long time, like I said, when I used to be in the field with Kelly does. And so, yeah, she knows how to get ahold of us. We're going to be doing a presentation for WHAM, that's going to be held in Cheyenne in June. WHAMCAT will be at the Liquor Division. We've got a new building that we opened in February of 2012, and so we're going to give a tour, and we're going to actually do the WHAMCAT session. We've got a great conference room at the Liquor Division. And that morning, we're actually going to be doing a presentation for the city attorneys. So, we're going to be doing some more liquor law, and we'll be doing a lot of the legislative updates. This was a big year in the legislature for liquor law, and we'll be updating them on all those laws. So, thanks again, and we appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Do we have anything else that we need to talk about tonight?
No, Your Honor.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
We adjourn, Your Honor.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.